Good morning, everyone. We will call the Economic Development Committee to order. Thank you. First item on the agenda was the IDA. Ms. Calabrese had to attend another meeting. Are there any comments or questions on her report contained in the agenda? If none, then we will move right to Community Resources.
Good morning.
Good morning, Michael.
We do have a couple of referrals this morning. The first referral was from Mr. Bill Bedford of the town of Wilmington. The request is for a four lot subdivision on the west side of New York State Route 86. The request does not have an adverse impact on county property and a letter of no comment is recommended on that.
I have a mover with you. Moved by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Martinell. Comments or questions? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Our second one was from Fred Knight of the town of Chesterfield. The request is for a subdivision on New York State Route 9. The request does not have an adverse impact on county property and a letter of no comment is recommended on that as well.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Depot and Mr. Tyler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I have several budget amendments. All of these are for projects that have been going on for multiple years that have been previously approved by the board. We simply need to carry the revenue appropriation from one year to the next. Probably do them individually, Dan. Yeah. So it'll take a minute. I apologize. Increased revenue appropriation in the amount of $6,282.25 for the Asable River Association. Appropriation account number 8021454AUS and revenue account 43910AUS.
Moved by Mr. Depot, second by Mr. Tyler. Comments or questions? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Increased revenue appropriation in the amount of $38,375 for Indian Lake Hub Grant. The appropriation account 8021454INDLK. Revenue account number 43989410. And I'll get you all these, Dina. I've got them right here, okay?
Okay. Thank you. Moved by Mr. Miga, second by Mr. Moore. Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next.
Increase revenue appropriations in the amount of $60,000 for North Hudson Hub. Appropriation account number 8021454NOHUDS. Revenue account number 43989414.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Miga. Comments, questions? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next.
We've got a couple more. Yeah. Increased revenue appropriation in the amount of $59,728.77. This is a recycling grant from the DEC. It has appropriation account number 8021454RECYCL and revenue account 43989416.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Depot, second by Mr. Miga. Comments, questions? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Increased revenue appropriation in the amount of $8,573,805.49. These are the community rising projects in Jay and Keene that were previously approved. We're simply moving it from one year to the next.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Depot, second by Mr. Tyler. Comments, questions? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next.
All right, last one, I promise. Increased revenue appropriation in the amount of $500 for our all sports account, Community Resources Department, 73214875487. And the revenue account 732148742705.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Miga, second by Mr. Moore. Comments, questions?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next.
Basically, the report, if you've got a chance to look at it, I reported on several grant applications that we're currently doing for communities and some others that have been submitted to this date. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, Michael. Any comments or questions for Michael? On any topic you desire. Miss, well, wait a minute. This just goes about.
Yeah, I did discuss this with Mike early on. I found out last week that day camp programs are not required to pay minimum wage. And so we're having discussions with our town board right now because that certainly put a hurt on our program in Mariah because we thought that we had to pay the minimum wage and we find now that we do not have to. So we had to limit the number because there's a requirement, so many counselors per number of students. So I'm just putting that information out there. I know Dan researched it. He looked into it also, but we are not required to pay them minimum.
Governments are exempt from the federal and state minimum wage requirements for seasonal employees that are under 20 years of age. Those employees have to be ones that work, that are hired within the 90 days on a continuous basis, no more than 90 days. But you can in fact pay them less than the minimum wage. You cannot pay them less than 425 per hour, but you can in fact pay less than minimum.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. Any other comments or questions for Michael? Dina?
Thank you very much for your answers.
Next, our historian?
Oh, hold on a minute. Good morning.
Good morning.
You have my event report. I don't really have anything to add this month. I hope you got a chance to look through. It's basically our programming for 2017. We will likely be adding a few programs and events as we near opening. But it's all there. The one thing we are adding that we usually don't have is a four film series relating to women's suffrage, so we're excited about that.
Thank you, Aurora.
You're welcome.
It does look like a nice schedule.
Yeah. Good.
We'll look forward to that. Questions or comments for our historian?
I do. Again, Aurora and I talked about this. She really is interested in just two of the chairs. She's going to take one and 12 of the jury chairs to move over to the museum. She really does have room more than that. So at some point, we have to decide what we're going to do with the rest of it, whether we surplus the towns, whether we make them available however. But we will move those chairs, one and two, over to the museum.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Along those lines, Dan, I talked to our historian in Westport at the building we have there, and they are definitely interested in at least one of those jurors.
Okay. Yeah, that's probably something that might be appropriate is that within the towns, any of the museums might be interested in, you know, at least one of the chairs.
So if any other towns have any interest, try to get County Manager Mr. Martinell.
I pay $50 a chair, like four. Not swivel, straight back.
So I hear 50.
Mr. Martin?
I got a question for Aurora. We received grant money for some funding to recognize Iain Nesmo, Holland and Lewis.
I heard, yeah.
And we are going to have a dedication of the signage this spring. I didn't know if you would be interested in coordinating a little something with it.
Yeah, I'd love to, yeah, definitely. Shall we, we'll have to work something out.
Good.
Congratulations. That's great to have that, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Aurora? If none, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Appreciate it. Next, we have Cooperative Extension. Mr. Rick.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll make this rather brief in respect of my colleague, Mr. McKenna. He's anxious to get up here. Just a couple of quick notes. We have a meeting, two meetings coming up that I wanted to elaborate just a bit upon. One is tomorrow morning, we have a planning committee concerning Adirondack Harvest, which ties into the whole area of agritourism, marketing and such. And part of that is that this is a program that's been going on and we want to bring in the farmers into a much more closer alignment and direction as to what, where this program is going. There's a lot of ideas out there and we want to get them together and establish them down on paper. I think it's a very, very important area because of the growth in local foods here in Essex County. The other meeting is Wednesday evening. Now, you've all seen the weather report, so that's an interesting thing. I've been in the back there texting back and forth to Cornell University. We have three individuals coming up from that area Wednesday for a meeting in Lawnsburg Range. And this is a stakeholders' meeting. This is to give directions to Essex County's Cooperative Extension, to get a feeling as to what direction we need to go. We have the traditional commercial farms, we have the small farms, we have added value, we have different marketing approaches, and we need their input. Extension is grassroots. It's tied to feds and state and such government and research, but it is grassroots and we really desire and want their opinion. We would love to have as many supervisors there that might come out as well. This is a town hall type meeting. This is not a power, death by PowerPoint. This will be questions from the audience, two people from Ithaca, two old regional specialists and to myself. And we're looking forward to this. I don't like to cancel because of weather, a couple of reasons. One, you don't hit everybody and somebody invariably shows up and is not too happy. The other piece about it is that weather doesn't usually bother people in the north country, I've found. So we persevere and we get there. So I, at this stage of the game, unless people from higher up, and I don't mean way up, but I mean in Ithaca, say that we can't, we are not coming up, and even if that's the case, I think we'll still have the meeting, but notices will be going out if we don't in every which way that I can. The other thing, and I have sent the report out, but the other thing that I'd like to talk about, and I don't mean to be a broken record, but I really believe that for the good of not just extension or the tenants' extension in Saw and Water of that building at the fairgrounds that we're housed in, but for the good of all related to history and aesthetics and the fairgrounds and also the safety of the people there, I really believe there needs to be a committee to review the structural and electrical service status of the Ag Youth and Natural Resource Center. And I would suggest that members of, there be some membership representative from the Board of Supervisors, DPW, obviously Cooperative Extension and Saw and Water and some perhaps community representatives. We have architectural plans. What we need to do is put together some sort of an estimate on costs, some estimates on action and determine what's going to be, what's going to happen to that building. Really don't need to have something dangerous happen there. And it is, to my concern, a threat as far as safety is concerned. So that's my quick report.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Rick. Considering the committee that is being suggested to form, I would leave that up to the county manager if that would be more appropriate to the committee with some cross-sectionals from here. What's your feeling on that?
I'll park the rain and see what it is.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Harris?
Yes. I think the changes that are happening with Cooperative Extension as a result of our new director are something that has been drastically needed. And I do believe that we will have the pulse and the best interest of Essex County agriculture involved with this. Thanks.
Thank you. Comments? Mr. Moore?
Yeah, talking about the Cooperative Extension building. Jim Dugan from the DPW department has been looking at this and I'll ask him to have a report as best he can at the DPW meeting next week on that.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate your help. Mr. Miga?
Jerry, that's great to hear. And at the very least, as we approach some type of committee initiative, just the bare bones of replacing a couple clapboards and having the inmates or somebody paint the place. I dropped my wife off there last Friday. I stepped back and I took a look at what seemed to me just aesthetic appearance of the place with not knowing, you know, about paint remediation or anything of that nature, but just, you know, out of a pride aspect, to make that building more white would be aesthetically pleasing.
Appreciate your observations.
Yeah, so that's kind of like, piggyback to that would be committee involvement, great. Having Jim take a look at it, tremendous. If we can get some paint on that this summer, just to spruce it up a little bit, I think, I think that'd be a real neat move.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Your director. Mr. Martinell?
Just, there's a lot of work to be done in the building and if we try to tackle the whole thing at one time, we're going to get scared away from it. So if we do the priorities, like you said, you've got some electrical work or something in one area, get that done and then go to another one. And I agree with some money and paint. Get people interested in it and go from there.
Yeah, we'd have a holistic approach.
Take it, take it, take it. It's bad, it's bad, but you could improve it and make it safer and look better without it faces. You let it go for 50 years, now we can't fix it.
Takes some time. Thank you very much.
In response to that, and I agree, you can't fix it at once, but I think that a committee also has the ability to reach out to both IDA but also to USDA World Development for grant dollars, those dollars from the state for historical, et cetera. So I think that with county as well as grant funding and some leveraging, and there is a small account set aside through, that has been, over the years, gone through extension but is in a reserved account for the building, I believe around $25,000, $30,000. So all these leverage for other dollars to go into it to lessen the blow to one area.
I'll just take it.
Thank you.
Yes, Mike. Found a contractor, semi-retired man, 55, still working man, but.
Younger.
Yeah, young guy. And put them on our payroll and it is legal to do. They would get a work of wage, an acceptable wage, but we wouldn't have to follow the Davis-Bacon Act and pay the bail rates because there are some, I'm sure in Essex County, there's if somebody is semi-retired, they could take on a lot of these, that project pieces and do a good job and put one.
Thank you, Michael. Anything further for Cooperative Extension? If none, thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate your report. Mr. McKenna, our Roost representative. Carol has come to Roost. Our world traveler, actually, yeah.
Just a couple of things, you know, I know Carol's not here, Jody from the IDA, but I've been engaged in those micro enterprise grants that they're engaged with for the five towns and, you know, it's really clear and it becomes important that we recognize, you know, development and marketing are the two ingredients that makes tourism successful. And they, I don't know if anybody sees or saw the work that they've done on those micro grants, but they produced a document that was about 278 pages long and it was so interesting reading that I read all of them, which is unusual. But more importantly, you know, they're going to, they have $500,000 in that micro enterprise grant project and, you know, it's for the five towns and looking through it, there was 20 applications that were submitted, three outside of the five towns, but nine were from Essex County and our towns. And of those nine, one, two, three, four, five, six had some sort of lodging tied with them. So I think that that's, that's really what we've got to do. And I think that, I just wanted to point out how important that was and also what a good job they've done on that and putting that together. And I think that they'll be finalizing those over the next week or so. Another thing, and not that this is, you know, I'm too, too back, Carol left so early, but also the distillery project in your town sounds very interesting. And, you know, again, it's, that's, sometimes you don't see it, but that is part of tourism as well. So I think that that's, that's a good thing and a good example of how, you know, our agencies have to work together overall. Also want to mention one other thing, too. This past week, for really seven days, we had 400, over 400, the National Junior College Nordic Ski Championships were held in Essex County. And if you look at the weather over the last couple of weeks, where we've gone from, you know, close to 60 above to close to 20 below, and the fact that it was pulled off, we should, you know, pat order on the back because from the comments we've heard from those 400 athletes, and with 400 athletes, there's probably another 150 support personnel, it was pulled off remarkably well. They were able to do, you know, to use the trail system at the ski jump complex and a couple of cold days before it started, they pumped out a lot of snow and it was pulled off magnificently. You know, I just think that that's, that's of significance to note because by canceling that, you know, not being able to adapt to it, it sends sort of a black mark around, but they were able to pull it off and the athletes were very happy with it. And a second though, you know, this, you know, we're looking at the World University Winter Games and that was a university program. This coming weekend in county, we're also hosting ECAC College Hockey Championship, so another university event. Real good hockey. I know the supervisor from Crown Point usually watches D3, but this is D1 supervisor. So it's, you know, it's another thing to see. So I want to point that out. Also, Adirondack Destination, we're holding our second great day. Tomorrow, we're having the second Adirondack Destination Marketing Seminar. Last year, we had about 200 people attend. A lot of the businesses in our county went, but hopefully with the snow, we're still going to get attendance. And mark your calendar, May 1 is going to be Adirondack Day down in the legislature in the well, so that's a good day to sort of get the Adirondack message around. And finally, I did want to talk that we are pursuing the World University Winter Games at this point. And, you know, I know I talked about the last two meetings, I'm going to talk a little bit more about it now because it is a big, significant event. And looking at it and looking how, who is, I mean, remember the 1980 Olympics? Anybody around then? I mean, do you remember what the, you know, the downtown of that Lake Placid Village was? I mean, remember what that was, the spirit? This is a similar in type of, in type of how it is with, you know, it was over 60 nations. I think we had 37 nations represented in the 80 Olympics, but, you know, we're not going to be looking at building an athlete village, looking at utilizing hotels for this event. So you can just imagine, you know, getting all that energy with 60 teams there, 3,000 or so athletes in their uniforms in that downtown area. We think it's something that will get recognized really well globally as having that spirit. No other, no other region or no other county can reproduce. In Amata, Kazakhstan, where they were this year, is a 2.5 million people city and even though it was close, it was still 40 minutes to an hour to get to different venues. So we're looking at this again as a way to revitalize the spirit of about utilizing sports for economic development in the region and also as a way to reinvigorate the international reputation of our county for multi-sports events. So we're going to be going over there again next week, really meeting one on the Fesha and also be attending what's called the Special Olympics World Winter Games as another observer program. We're looking at that for 2021, Fesha Games in '23. The Special Olympics World Winter Games, about a total of about 15,000 people for about 10-day period, is sort of the size of an Ironman event for 10 days. So that's, you know, another, again, building blocks, we think, is the way to do these things.
Thank you very much, James. I know you're busy, but it does give us an idea of just what the preparatory timeline is for trying to back these types of events. It's quite a commitment. Questions or comments?
Just a comment. Is, over the weekend, I happened to go to, I think I was in Hanover, Vermont, and they had this place called the Artesian Village. And this speaks to not only the distillery that Charlie has, but also the future of the Frontier Town concept. And in this tight area, there was a brewery, a distillery, a bakery, a Simon Pierce pottery and glass store, and this was all brand new. I have no idea how they put this together, but like all these buildings were state of the art. And they had an outfitter that, you know, like ran fat tire bikes around the perimeter of the place and stuff, but they had, I could only imagine being there in the summertime when people could be outdoors and enjoy all these things. So, you know, if anyone ever has the occasion to go over there, I would say it's a worthwhile thing to look at and probably something that we should aspire to as a longer range mechanism for a destination.
That's a great idea. Is it Hanover, you said?
I think it was Hanover that I was.
So you did have some of that distillery first? That's why you can't remember?
No, actually, I had the, I went to Harpoon Brewery and I skipped the distillery, but I did take note that it was there.
That's good. I'll definitely look at that for sure.
Thank you, Wes. Other comments or questions for James?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, James. For the business to come before the committee this afternoon, Mr. Martin?
I just got a question pertaining to the letter we received from Kathy Mosher on Frontier Town property. I was under the impression any costs incurred for renovation there was going to be picked up by the state. And then reading that letter, it just comes across to me as they would reimburse us for what they consider reasonable cost for conveying the property to them safely. Is that the case? So we're going to be expected to.
Yeah, that's the way I read the letter, too. I don't know if that's actually going to be the case. I don't, you know, I can't say for certain. But I guess my recommendation would be that even if that were the case, you would still do it. You know, again, if, if somebody said to you, if you put up 1,000, we'll spend 100,000, would you do it? Chances are, you would. If the state's saying, if you put up, I don't care what it is, if it's even 700,000 to fix that property to get it turned over, if they're going to put up 32 million, I think you'd still do it. I mean, I don't, I know that's not something that we really want to sign on to if we have to, but if, I mean, if we don't have to, but if in fact that's the way the deal strikes out, you would have a hard time, I would have a hard time recommending that you not. You know, I don't like the idea of having to front the money, but if in fact that's part of the deal and it results in a $32 million investment in the property, I could not recommend it.
Do we have anything where we're at with this at all?
I know that it's been ongoing discussions. I don't know specifically. I think they're waiting for the appraisal of the property is what they're ultimately waiting for.
Thank you. Mr. Preston?
It was explained to me from DEC last week that that letter was actually meant to cover the county and that it is a form of a letter of intent that if the county does incur the c-. incur the cost, that that was meant to be a letter of intent, that we will be reimbursed for any cost that we incur. Pardon me?
Reasonable? I think that the letter said reasonable.
It did say reasonable. Yeah, well, something that's, yeah.
Again, if we follow.
Yeah, documented, if we tear down buildings, if we do whatever. This appraisal, that is what's been holding everything up. And quite frankly, as soon as I'm done here, I'm going to go talk with the county attorney. The appraisal of the property is what's been holding everything up. And as soon as that's done, and then there's a part that is North Hudson's part, that I will not speak for Mr. Moore, they're chomping at the bit, as in the state, to get this moving.
And in terms of reasonable, Jim, I mean, at least the way I would see it is the state has certain rules that we have to follow in terms of procurement. If we follow those, I think to the state's point of view, that would be reasonable, whatever the cost may be.
And I understand that, but I'm just thinking historically how the state sometimes.
I know. Believe me, you know, you're talking to a guy who knows how long it takes to get state money, but with discounted investment, I think we'll probably.
Thank you. And thank you for that up-to-date clarity, Mr. Preston. Other comments or questions, Mr. Marnell?
To reference those buildings, more than likely, they're going to have to be trucked
The buildings themselves, yeah, in most cases, what happens under.
95% chance they ought to be trucked away.
Yeah, well, typically, what happens under any, any building that is unsafe to enter, if we tear it down, it all has to be treated as asbestos and removed. So in all likelihood, we would be looking at costs associated with tearing down, loading up and hauling away to an approved site or disposal of asbestos-related materials.
Yeah. So what if we're having us from renting a 25-ton excavator and going down there with a grapple bucket on it and crush those buildings and put them in a nice neat pile? So when the time comes, they, they get them the hell out of there, they're falling down, we know that.
I'm not a jerk.
But they've got to be, they've got to be torn down before they get trucked away. So if ever, you put a big excavator in there with a grapple bucket on it and you crush that up and you put a nice neat pile on it, and then when it comes time, whoever trucks them away is ready to go. And we don't have to look at them any longer. Or somebody, I mean, I think they've been in every motel room up here. Last week, I drove by and the doors are all open. There's people in and out. The wish, you know, nobody gets cold enough to build a fire, but it's too bad. Put them in a pile, they're going to have to be taken down before they're trucked away.
Okay, thank you.
That's a three days' work.
I don't disagree. Great. So once we get clear direction from the state, we will probably put that on the to-do list. Other questions or comments, any other business to come before the committee? Being none, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.